Cold Spring Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for Thursday, May, if it's May 3rd. It's May 17th. I'll have to catch up to the time from the last time I turned it on. We've got three things on our agenda. We're gonna review some minutes. There it is.
Could walk here faster. Could find Parkers face.
We've got three things on the agenda. We're gonna review some minutes. And then we've got a public hearing for, for Furnace Street. And then we're gonna do a workshop for 2:30 main.
Why don't you do it?
I would just like to get, get them done and get them out of, out of the way. It shouldn't take more than a few minutes. And we're behind also. So.
I think there are two here.
John, you were at this one.
Harry read them.
You were not at this one. Donald.
When did you leave that done?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I left it there.
So, I'll just say a couple of things about fences. We've, um, the village code puts a four-foot fence restriction in residential districts, which is where both applicants are today. There's a couple of other fence rules on the books. One is that B1, the business zone, is required to block any light or undesirable activity. So I was thinking technically you could probably request that your neighbors put a fence in. But then you wouldn't get to pick what it looks like. So, and then the other thing that affects fences is on a corner lot like they have, there needs to be a triangle of high visibility area for cars that are turning. And that's it. If anybody wants a higher fence, they can either put it all the way within the setback, which is usually not possible on the small lots in the village, or come to us for a variance. So that's what we're doing tonight. And as, at the public hearing, we're going to discuss the merits of Richard's application for his fence. And at the workshop for Dave and Sarah's hearing, we are not going to discuss the merits. We're just gonna make sure your application is ready for, for the public hearing and get that scheduled. So, I think that's it. As soon as Donald is ready, we'll move on with the minutes.
Everybody else has done the minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm good with both. You're, you're done in both?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, so let's.
I'll make a motion to approve the April 5th minutes as written.
Only correction on the, on the main minutes was my first name is misspelled with a C.
Okay, and it should be a C.
With a C. E-R-I-C.
And what was it?
It was a K.
It was a K, alright, so we will.
John, which date did you?
April 5th.
April 5th.
Yeah.
Any corrections for April 5th?
I don't see any.
Okay, do we have a second?
To approve, unless it changes.
A second.
Okay, all in favor who were present?
Aye.
Alright. Okay, April 5th is approved.
We have March 15th.
March 15th.
See any corrections on March 15th?
Okay. Okay, alright.
I'll make a motion except for Ms.
Okay. I'll second that, I guess I can do that.
Yes, you can.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
I'm gonna keep you awake.
I'm reading. And finally, the last one over there, which was?
April 5th. It's already been done.
You already did it.
So then we have, which one haven't we done? Three?
So you did April 5th and what, March 15th?
March 15th.
Okay, so we'll do May 3rd.
Okay. I haven't looked at it.
You're, were not, you were absent. So.
Definitely May 3rd.
May 3rd. What was that?
Kentucky Derby.
Of course.
Good times. I wasn't here for that.
That's across the street from the one we're.
Yeah, you were.
No, this is the one we're talking about tonight.
Yeah.
I was here.
Yeah, yeah, I was here. You seen anything wrong in it?
Why, why? Kinda prove it.
You wanted to look at it? No?
Nice look at this?
Yeah, that's why I gave it to you. It's not Laurel and Hardy Show, this is.
No, this is fine. I already looked at this. This is fine.
So, who wants to make a motion?
I can't do it, I wasn't here.
Make a motion to approve the main.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as opposed to the minutes.
Okay. All in favor?
Alright.
Who's, I didn't hear, who seconded the last one?
Let's call it Donald. Alright, so all our minutes are approved. Next, let's open the public hearing for, for Furnace Street. So, Richard, come on up and give us, give us all the official paperwork you have and then introduce us to the project and the public.
The project. Okay. Well, the, the project is to put a five-foot fence, put that one foot topper along the back of my property that borders Parking Lot. If you want the same material, you could.
Yeah, well, we're all gonna wanna copy of that and I pass.
Actually.
Here's the original stuff from last week.
Yeah.
Did it have your green slips?
Oh, yeah, yeah. There's, where I send out to all my neighbors. And I have one letter of support if you want that.
Sure.
And actually Kerry Downey, who's the business owner of the fact mine, told me he would write me something. And at first I said I didn't think it was necessary, but then I changed my mind and I contacted him. And they sent me an email with an attachment and it turned out to be an estimate for a generator for someone other than me. I didn't get that yet.
Okay.
Let's see. Let's see what else do I have here. I have the zoning board map with my property circled on it.
For anybody who doesn't have a chance.
Right, stick over there.
Sure.
Okay, so.
It's right behind me.
I also printed out the Google map that shows the property and where the fence is right here.
Why don't you look at this? The most square.
And here's photographs of the existing fence that I want to replace. And then.
Nice printing on those.
That's a good iPhone camera.
Much better than my.
And then here's some brochures on the type of fence I'm thinking about, with the type of toppers. I saw this one that I, I want something pretty simple.
So we're, we're somewhat interested in, in that, but I, I think we're just gonna limit it to six feet and then you can, you can do what you like with it within that, within that six feet. It's probably how we.
This was a brochure provided to me by the developer that I, or landscaper that I contacted of Irish. So, so that's all the additional support materials I have. What you want there?
It said the parking lot, dang.
Right, okay.
It's down in parking lot. And then another one's up here.
Yeah. Why don't you, why don't you give us the?
This is Main Street, right?
Yes. The subjective description of what you're doing.
Well, the existing fence is, is actually two layers of fence that are wired, they're rusting, they're falling apart. There's poison ivy and all kinds of stuff growing up here. And it was watered by a grass that had a lot of grass. When Downey bought that property, he paved it all. So cars drive through there.
So there's visibility from Main Street.
It's become an active, active throughway almost, so.
Do cars actually go all the way through that driveway?
They do often, yeah. Yeah. I know that, I don't know if they're supposed to or not, but they do, they drive. Cause there's that little section on Main Street and then we'll go through.
Interesting.
Yeah.
And the fence is?
It's just a one idea.
Go ahead.
So the fence is gonna go from the, the back corner of your lot that borders with that?
The back of my house.
Of your house, right.
The back of the building that's beside there that's owned by Eagle Enterprises.
Right there.
It's about 50 feet of fence.
And have you decided if you're gonna put the fence on the wall or?
Um, I would assume it would go just like the existing fence and go, you know, on the outside of the wall.
I get, I'm not sure where the property line is. I mean, as long as you put it on your property line.
Yeah. It's right, right there. Like I said, I talked to Downey about that and he was okay with it, so.
And that's your neighbor?
Yeah. He owns that parking lot.
I don't know, it's still a risk that even if he was selling it, you know, if it was in any way on his property, somebody would buy it.
Yeah.
You know?
It's his or their.
Would could, could complain about it, you know? So, you know, even though he grants you something, unless he gives you an easement or, you know, a right to put it there and it shows up on your deed, it's hard to persuade the next homeowner.
Okay, well, I can always.
Just to let you know.
Yeah.
We, we can't actually grant a variance for his property.
Right.
It has to be on your property if, if you want us to.
I guess I could bring it in a little bit so it's on my property then. But it would be on top of that wall then.
What you're gonna make?
Yeah, we'd make it higher.
How high is that wall?
Um, it's only in the.
Is it visible at all?
It's right back here. There's like, there's like four steps that go up and might have a raised block.
And how thick is the wall?
Oh, it's, it's just brick, like, like one, one layer of brick thick.
Okay. So, you know, but if you were to put a fence on top of that, that would become such a part of the height totals.
Yeah. And the existing fence does not go on top of that. It's right, right there. There might be a picture that shows it better. Let me see.
Does the, the measurement of the fence?
See, it's kind of right there. There it is.
From his side of the property to the public side to where the wall on that.
Um, I don't think the code addresses whether the fence.
That's what they have to do to keep it to the same.
I mean, we wouldn't measure it from, I don't think we would measure it from his neighbor's property, the height of the fence on his property. So I would think if the wall is the border of your property, we would measure it from the top of the wall, which is essentially, it's a retaining wall. It's not really a.
Right.
Wall above the ground level.
Yeah, I mean, cases look at it differently. I mean, it, I'd have to look back at the case to see what they really say about it. But I can remember issues about if you build it on top of a wall, that becomes part of the height differential.
We had that on High Street. We made the guy take the fence down if he knows High Street. They measured it wrong and they made a fence higher. They didn't count for the stone, the concrete. So we made him take that much off to give, to equal it out. So if he was to put it on top of that retaining wall, it wouldn't be a six-foot fence, it would only be a four-foot fence up there because you just had, say if it's two feet. So that two plus the four would be six and then it would be six all the way down. Cause we, we had a hell of a time down on High Street.
But, but you know, because this is on a slant, you would almost take half the differential. Uh, you know, because it's accentuated as it goes downhill, you know, the height. So you would be probably permitted a little extra here. It would be measured really from the height differential at the short end. That would be typical, but I just know that case law, you know, tends to say that part of the fence height is what it's built on, if it's a wall or an artificial structure.
Is the gray, is the, on your side, on your side of the retaining wall, where's the ground level? Is it the top of the retaining wall or down below?
Does it come to flush, like for instance, does it come flush with this wall on your property or is it this part of the wall actually above your?
Is it basically just the?
The soil?
This is above the soil there, but it's like waist high. Where down here, it's like this high.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, my property goes up, but the fence doesn't on this level.
Right, so what would you say the height differential is between the wall and your side of the property?
Well, that's, that's probably about three feet.
How much? Three feet?
Well, I think John's asking about the top, are you asking about the top of the wall?
The top of the wall from here and then measured when you're standing on your side of the property, from the ground up to the top of the wall, from your side of the property, not this side.
Yeah, yeah.
It's about three feet?
Yeah, yeah.
Three feet, that's the wired fence. We're talking about the Mason Rubertanian wall.
Just the Mason Rubertanian.
The Mason Rubertanian wall is three feet hot? No, it's not.
Well, the, the steps up here, but I say that grade, so maybe two feet, you know?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I think it's probably looking more like two, but I'm not gonna, it's hard for me to estimate, but it looks like two.
Yeah.
But it's something that we.
So there's, the wall is two feet high from, on your side of the, of the wall?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause my, my yard is raised back there. And like, like I have a, a walk that goes beside my garage, three steps up and then a higher lot behind. Like about, I don't know what the exact.
I see that one's like grass. It's right there.
It's.
Yeah, but it is when you look right there. It's like a four.
So the wall is sticking up two feet on your side and three feet on his side?
No, the wall's. With the ground on my side.
That's what, that's what I.
It's two feet from the parking lot to the side of me.
We're trying to get it.
Okay, so, so on your, when you're standing on your property?
Yeah.
The soil comes flush with the top of the wall?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what we're trying to get at. I mean, the tendency still is such that, you know, I know his property's raised, I mean, this, it, this is, you know, a nuance to this case. I mean, everything is fact driven and that's what we're always supposed to look at. But if, if on his side of the property, it was virtually as low as the neighboring property, then it would have to be factored in, but still something has to be taken a little bit to account that it is on a raised portion to begin with. I mean, it, it has to be at least considered, especially when you're looking to put a bigger fence in. I mean, more than four feet. I mean, it's something to be considered as a factor.
I think the idea being that the objectionable things on the commercial side of the property are basically two feet lower or, you know, a couple of feet lower than your property. So you've got, you've got two feet of, of, effectively two feet of fence anyway. So, you know what I'm saying?
But once it sits on the top of that wall, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I think that's backwards though, because he's up, he's up two feet so he can see more of it. If he were down two feet, then he would.
That's right.
He would be blocked. But he's up two feet from the.
Right.
But it's a good, I mean, it's a good way to.
Well.
Think about it and, you know, push it back and forth, the idea. And it's, again, it's just factors to consider, you know, cause everything that we look at is fact based, as you know, and everything is balanced out.
It's a gray area or a code. We should have that nailed down. What, when you have a gray differential on one side or the other, how do you, what do you do?
It may be able to be nailed down. There, there are so many possibilities that it's basically, it's better to be fact driven and we just specify it in any kind of order that we issue.
So, Richard, you were originally thinking the fence was gonna be down in the lot?
Right.
Which means that it would have been effectively a three-foot fence on the high side of the wall.
Yeah, it'd be about like it is now.
But we can't, we can't give a variance for that property, assuming that the wall is the property line.
Sure.
So you have to move it back to actually on your property?
Right, yeah, that would be not, not much to do, but then it would be on top of that wall.
So I think the next, then you have a, a decision that you might wanna consider, which is, do you wanna put a six-foot fence on top of your wall? Or are you happy to go with the same height that you originally planned for, which is gonna mean, you know, some angled fence cuts to, to get that at?
Well, I could do like four foot with a one foot there, it's on the top of that and then six foot along the lower part.
That's, that's what would make with sense, because you're gonna keep everything even. You're gonna take the two feet of ground, you're gonna cut two feet off the fence and you're still gonna have your.
Yeah.
Like that. Just this part of the fence is gonna be shorter because of the height. I mean, that's the only practical way you can do it.
So.
Downey's not gonna give him a variance or not gonna let him put a fence on his property and he's not gonna do it.
Yeah. And we could even grant a.
As Aaron says, you're gonna get what you kind of were looking for to begin with. And also, we looked at this at the end of, after the last meeting, from, from that, that part, standing on Main Street, looking at the rear where you'd have it on top of that wall. And to me, the, 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 the lower feels better out there. Because, you know, you are standing there, you're gonna see this two-feet-high wall and five feet and a foot more.
Yeah.
It's gonna be, you know?
Yeah.
It's gonna be high, so you can live with it the way you, as Aaron says, kind of thought of it, but just put it on your wall and, but the, the, the height will be the same effectively.
Right, right. Yeah, that'd be fine.
That sounds pretty good to me.
Yeah, that would be fine.
And there is precedent, a lot of precedent for residential, boarding, commercial, um, leave zone districts.
You know, in reality, you're not gonna.
You have a higher fence.
You're not gonna see this fence from anywhere, but you're not gonna see it from Main Street.
You see, yeah, you do. You stand here, you can look right through.
You gotta, it's a, what is it? Two, what is it? Emmerleekis parking lot.
The two-car parking lot.
Emmerleekis parking lot.
So it's about 14 feet wide, 13.
Yeah, but I mean, it's not gonna be an eyesore. I mean.
It's an eyesore now.
Oh, yeah, it's an eyesore now, but I'm saying when you do it, you, you.
So, well, what I'm, what I think what I'm trying to say is from the street, you would see effectively an eight-foot-high fence if you, from that angle.
Oh, good, six foot.
Yeah, with six feet on top of two feet of wall.
Yeah.
And that is a lot of fence.
Well, yeah. But if you do it like you suggested, four foot over two feet.
It makes it a lot more, you know?
Right.
Deal with it. I mean, it's, you know, it's.
And it's, again, it's not like down the open, it's not bare. There's, there's buildings in front, most of it, so.
So Downey's property, adjacent to it going towards Main Street is commercial and the parking lot and whole deal.
Yeah.
Right, no doubt.
Yeah, so that.
A part of my building.
That's the, that's the clear precedent we have in the village.
No, no, definitely.
So he's, he's, that's commercial in front.
Yeah, he's.
Aren't you allowed?
It's B1 to R1.
Aren't you allowed the fence between B1 and R1?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, we've, we've said it for that.
That's why the code doesn't say.
Right.
And, and, you know, case law does sort of support that too. We've looked this up before. That between commercial and residential properties, where there's more of an, an air and light nuisance or, you know, noise nuisance, depending on the use of the commercial property.
You got.
Yeah, everything's sort of fact driven, but, and again, you know, as Aaron knows, we, we have to balance everything out. In this case, with regards, you know, just if you wanted to, if we were done a little bit in that notion, just the, the nature of the fence is usually something we take into account too, right?
The nature of the fence?
Or the design.
Isn't that why the Historic Review Board?
That's their.
They gotta, he gotta go to them.
Yeah. I've already said it to them.
We don't dictate lattice fences, we just dictate the fence. I never.
Well, that, that would be sort of true, but we have discussed chain link fence, fence issues before.
Yeah, but I don't think we've ever had a problem with other fences.
Well, I, I think the context that I'm referring to is like, some things just don't go to the Historic Review Board, like for instance, if you're outside of the historic district.
You mean historic district?
Yeah.
I know he is.
He's kinda having a problem.
So that makes it a, a non-issue for us, but when we were in areas outside of the historic district and people were talking about putting up six-foot fences, you know, chain link and so on and so forth, we had issues with the height, not only that and the appearance. And that's something Historic Board wasn't gonna touch.
I think we could certainly mention that we've seen his ideas for the design and we like them for the.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I hear you. It's to this.
Get your mouth, yeah.
I get it.
Which one are you using?
I'm glad the Historic Board's in on this.
These are just ideas that I've floated.
Oh, you haven't specifically picked that one yet?
Yeah, just something simple.
So I would just.
No fancy.
I would just like to nail down exactly how you want us to vote on the fence application. Do you want it to be level as you had it originally intended? Or do you want it to be?
I have the idea of doing the four foot on the back and, you know, higher down lower, you know, I'm fine with that.
So I, I think in that case, we're kind of limiting it to six feet based on the level of the parking lot next to it, even though it's going to be on your property?
Right.
And you're okay with that?
The fence can be no more than six feet above grade, whether it's the applicant's grade or the adjoining property grade.
Well, it could be, yeah, and if it really is only two, two feet?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it's that floor that you can kind of see.
And you're, you're, what you're saying is you're gonna do a six-foot-high fence and five feet of it, the top one foot will be.
Just one of those privacy toppers.
The top one foot will be.
Open air?
The open.
Yeah, the open, open.
Open stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, in my estimation, I think that would come within our purview to say if we were to approve a certain height fence, we can say that we do it with the idea that there is a portion of the fence on the top that's open. Because.
Covered.
You know, even though we're talking about the whole of the fence, the notion is we're seeing it because.
Yeah, we did that with Dave Marion, uh, bordered the, um, Halvein, the baseball.
Baseball field, we did that because they had the shed there.
Same dark fence, same, same thing. That's commercial to him. He had the dumpster there.
The shed.
And he had, he did fences like this and was part of the application. And, and you know, even though technically aesthetics aren't supposed to be our thing,[1503.87] And, and, you know, even though technically aesthetics aren't supposed to be our thing, we're human beings.
Right, right.
Right?
But, but this is a little, you know, technically, we would be, you know, granting the height of that fence, but with sort of the proviso that the applicant says that they're gonna keep it open air at a certain height from the top going down.
Right.
Because that, that would factor into our, our, our consideration of the height of the fence that we're gonna allow.
Yeah.
I mean, that's my feeling about it. Uh, I mean, there, there's nuances with everything, but, uh, you know, optically, and that's what we're concerned about here in part. We want, you know, the applicant to have privacy or, you know, residential, commercial, but at the same time, optically and looking across and airflow a little bit, you just don't want to make it too dense.
Neighborhood and Main Street and, you know, it, it will be, it will be visible and, you know.
I suppose one of my questions to you guys is if this fence is not on my property, it's Downey, then I don't need to remove that fence, I can just put my fence up.
Oh, yeah, the brick fence, the brick wall. Oh, no, oh, I'm sorry, the other.
That one's just a brick fence.
The wire fence.
The wire fence that's there.
You think, you, you don't know if it's yours?
Oh, it's, it's right on the property line, it waivers. You know, and I've talked to Downey, he's okay with me taking it down. And he was gonna write me a letter to that effect and I didn't get it. But, um, you know, that's gonna look bad, having that wire fence and, and that other fence buttered right up against it.
I think you're better off taking it down.
I do, too.
If you get vines that grow up on his side, you can't control it coming over there.
You know, he's already got, his side is wild with poison ivy and stuff growing out in that lot that he paved. Yeah.
It's definitely on his property.
Was that?
It's definitely on his property.
Well, if he, make sure, if you do it, make sure he gives you a letter of permission to take it down.
Yeah.
And you're covered.
He, he said he would, and like I said, I, I got a, a, an estimate for a generator for someone else that he, he sent out an attachment, so I've gotta get that home.
Okay. I don't have any more questions.
No, I'm good.
Okay. Is the fence gonna go right, I mean, how close to the building it's next door, I mean, to the rear of your property, that's the building?
Let's see, you can see it. There's a, a pole there.
Okay.
To that.
And is, now, who's, at what point does it become somebody else's property?
Like, that's where that building starts.
The actual, the adjoining building is on his property.
That building is, is on your property?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that building backs up to my property.
Right up to the line?
Right there.
Wow, oh, it's actually on your property?
It's on his property.
Yeah.
Wow, okay, so you can build it right to the wall?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Just to make sure we're not approving it, you know, I mean, we prove it for the distance that we can.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Here's a letter from Hartford. Given him. Uh, should we read this?
Go ahead.
Yep. Um, regarding the public hearing on the six-foot side yard fence for four Furnace Street from James Hartford and Juhi Hartford. Um, Dear Mr. Wolf, we fully support our neighbor Richard Bruce's zoning board of appeals application to install a six-foot-tall fence at his side yard of four Furnace Street, which faces the adjacent commercial parking lots.
Okay.
And that's just an email from James, too?
And this is another one from James?
Yeah.
Uh, I love it, and two. Okay, so I'll add this in also, um, again, from James Hartford, uh, to your rich. I just got your letter concerning your fence application, I am in support of your application, I am sure it will look terrific. Give you the privacy you need and be in character with the community. Juhi and I will be out of the country when you have your hearing, so we won't be able to attend and voice our support. Please feel free to share this email with ZBA so they are aware of my position. As you have noticed, my immediate neighbors were forced to take down their replacement in-kind stockade fence by the ZBA, and now we have overgrazing in our own backyard for deer for the first time ever and a return of skunks and raccoons as well. Good fences make good neighbors and keep our gardens safe, too. Thank you, ZBA. Okay. Sarcastic there, James?
No. I knew that was coming.
The response is thank you Village Board, because the Village Board are the people that wrote the laws.
All right, so why don't we, um, describe what we're voting on and then run through our criteria and we can, um, we can take a vote. I'm a little less prepared than usual, so what I'd like to propose is, um, when we have a decision on the application, I will write it up and send it around to, uh, to you all. Let's go.
Yeah.
By the weekend or by the end of the weekend?
And everybody respond within a day or two, you receiving it, so you know.
And then, um, then I'll get that on to, uh, to Jeff and sign it. Okay, so what we are, um, considering in the application is a fence running from the corner of your house along the main street side of your property to the, um, end of your property on that side. And we're considering granting a maximum height fence six feet above the level of the neighboring, uh, parking lot. So that means it's gonna be, the fence, it's, the wood part itself will be shorter on one end and taller on the other end. Um, and we are understanding that there's going to be an open, see-through upper section of the fence.
Yeah.
Of, um, I think, no, no more than one feet high?
Yeah.
One foot high?
One foot.
Should we put a minimum on, rather than a maximum?
Well, I think we should put a maximum so it doesn't get changed to four feet with the next owner or something.
And just to clarify, the topper is included in the measurements, the maximum measurement.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yeah.
So it's, um, it's just to clarify, I, I don't think that we need to specify the topper, but we might, might as well since you've clearly.
Well, we can reference to something, you know, that we've shown as a design, just, you know, saying that it doesn't have to be particularly this design to something similar.
Do you want to keep a picture of that, the picture I found?
Well, if we keep, keep a picture, but we also just simply mention the, uh, the, uh, the manufacturer and the, and the design in the fence.
To do that as well.
You know, just. There you go.
So I want to, um, I want to amend that first part about the maximum height of six feet, because it's possible that the, um, so you can put a four-foot fence in there right now on the wall, and that might actually be higher than six feet above the parking lot. So I want to say maximum of six feet above the level of the neighboring parking lot or four feet above the property ground level, whichever is higher. So that gives you the room to go, um, to go even higher than six feet if the wall is, um.
Too tall.
Yeah, I mean, we don't want to, we don't want to limit you below your, your, already, you know, the four feet that you're already allowed to do.
So I'm trying to understand that, so the, the idea is the fence is gonna be built on top of the wall?
Right.
But you're gonna measure it from the parking lot of the neighboring property going up to the top of the fence?
That would be, it can be six feet from the neighboring parking lot. Or it can be four feet from his own property, whichever is higher. So if the wall is, if the wall is five feet at that end, let's just say, he could put a four-foot fence legally right now without anything from us, and it would be nine feet above the lot. But we don't have the exact measurements for the wall, so I just want to make sure we're not restricting him something, to something smaller than he's already legally allowed to do.
Good.
Okay. Um, and then the fence may only be placed on four Furnace Street, I think that's obvious, but let's put it in since the existing fence is.
The applicant's property.
Mystery. Um, anything else that, that we need to add to, to that?
I can't think of it.
Um, and it's only on that one, only on the one side.
You could put, with, it's with the understanding that the fence is gonna actually be built on top of the wall, did you specify that?
Um, no.
The existing wall?
Okay, so I'm gonna say only placed on four Furnace Street property, which we understand is bordered by a retaining wall?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's run through our criteria. Um, first, can the benefit be achieved by other means available to the applicant?
I don't think so, because, uh, it's a small property, it's tight quarters, it's commercial against residential, and there's an existing wall in place, uh, there's, uh, property-level differentials.
Well, he could plant.
He could plant.
In this case, it's a, uh, residential bordering commercial.
Commercial.
And so that trumps, and also we don't have to find, in the positive, find each of the five count, each of the five considerations. I mean, he does, he does, he, he does have the, everybody has the ability to plant. I'm, I'm not suggesting that in this case, because, you know, I know that we have a precedent for your situation where you've got commercial to residential.
Pretty lean plant, I mean.
But.
Put in a hedge.
Tens of, oh, okay.
Privet.
Trees.
Yeah.
Okay, um, number two, then, does it create an undesirable change in the neighborhood character or detriment to nearby properties?
I don't think so.
No.
Not, not from the, the height that we've authorized and the nature of the fence that, uh, we've seen and considered as shown by the applicant.
And I think it's actually gonna make it a little nicer looking.
Yeah, you get that fence and all the garbage around it.
Yeah.
Especially if the old fence is removed, and, you know, with the introduction of a new fence.
Um, is the request substantial?
No, because, uh, we're looking at the commercial to residential, uh, issues here. And, uh, six foot is what we have seen to be the common accepted level for that kind of a dividing fence between those two nature, natures of properties, the commercial and residential.
Um, I would also say that we are granting the minimum, we're already granting the minimum possible, um, fence height. We could potentially be granting it on top, six feet on top of the wall.
Mm-hmm.
Or considering, I suppose.
Right.
We have granted it, yeah.
Exactly. By the way, did we close the public hearing?
Oh, no, we didn't.
So I make a motion to close the public hearing. Oh, if, unless somebody has one more question.
I guess we didn't ask the public if you would like to ask any questions.
I'm sure it was really great.
Okay, so, you know, I do have one more question for the applicants before we're closing it. I just want to make sure, so you understand what we're authorizing as far as, you know, how the fence is gonna be and how it's gonna be constructed and the height of the wall? Yeah, go ahead.
No, no more than four on the back half of the, the lot where it's raised. And then six along that walk that goes along the garage, so the fence will be even higher all the way across. Is that right?
Yeah, so is that wall basically level as it runs along your property?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you're standing on your property, right, if you're standing on your property, not the neighbor's, how high do you envision the fence being from the top of the wall going up? Where, and you're standing at your side?
It would be four foot, um, if I'm standing in this upper part of my.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, just, I just want to make sure he understands the type of fence, and is that accurate, what we're discussing, right?
So your fence contractor, he's actually gonna take his tape measure and he's gonna stand in Downey's parking lot. He's gonna measure up from that parking lot.
For the fence on top of that wall.
And then he'll go six feet, and go, okay, that marks the top of the open part.
Yeah.
And then he's gonna measure one foot down, that marks the part of the, of the closed part.
Right.
And then he's gonna go down to the low end and he's gonna measure again.
Right.
And then he's gonna do a string and then he's gonna build a fence.
That makes sense, then, and it's all gonna be built on top of the wall. That's.
He might have four foot on top of the wall.
Although we did say that he could go as high as.
Right.
As four feet or six feet, which, four feet on top of the wall or six feet from the bottom of the lot, whichever is higher.
Which is why we need a week or a couple of days to write the decision to, to get that language squared away.
Just to.
Do you understand why I'm trying to make sure that we both understand each other, this is a little bit of a different type of measuring? So I, I'd hate to see him start with the fence and then all of a sudden, oh, that's not what we really said, so I want to hear.
Right.
A little bit of my back.
Uh, so how do we want to clarify that to make sure?
Well, I think he's clarifying in essence, uh, well, Donald said, uh, but, you know, you're, you're measuring from the, uh, if you're measuring from the adjoining neighbor's side, Downey's, you're going straight up, you go up six feet, right?
Then he's gonna verify that he's got at least four feet of fence height on his side. And if he doesn't, if it's four foot, he's only got three foot eight, then he'll make it four inches higher to get that four feet on his side.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, good. Just wanted to make sure that we were on board.
But if he's got, if he's got four foot plus and it's a six-foot-high fence from Downey's side, then you're good to go.
And if you have any questions, just come back and speak to us.
No, still on questions.
But you're, what you're gonna have to do is you're gonna have to sit down with your fence guy, because they roll into town.
Right.
And they don't know anything about this stuff, and, and they, they're not used to measuring height from the adjoining property.
Right.
So you're gonna have to sit down with him, or else all of a sudden you're gonna bang, that fence is gonna be up in, you know, one hour.
And, and we're gonna give you a copy of our decision, and so, you know, you, you're gonna discuss a little bit what we, you know, granted. If they have any questions, you know, you just come back and speak to us, you know.
Okay.
When the, um, when the building inspector comes to look at it when it's done, he's gonna measure it, and if it's, if it's more than what we've, um, allowed here, then he will say, you've gotta take it down.
Right.
Or shorten it, and we don't want you to have to do that.
Yeah, I don't want to have to do that either.
We don't have a problem like that.
So Aaron, John made a motion to close the public hearing.
Yeah, so I mean, should we go forward with, yeah, I make a motion to close the public hearing. Anybody else, a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
All in favor to close the public hearing?
Aye.
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 All right, we can resume our deliberations then. Um, will the request have adverse physical or environmental effects? I would say no.
No.
It's not affecting.
Airflow would be the only thing. Sort of, everything's sort of tight back there anyway.
Yeah.
I mean, the building itself is higher, it's a building flush up against, it's, it's building the building, actually. I mean, you know, it's a slight, you know, airflow thing, but.
Yeah, but I have cars parking on that parking lot and I get fumes in my backyard and like that, and people grilling on that parking lot.
Well, that's, everything's a balancing.
So that's airflow?
No, 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 I get it, no, I'm not saying.
Negative airflow.
If that's negative airflow, it might, yeah.
It is.
Well, we could put that in there, too, just to point out that the fence is being used for that. While, you know, it, it tends to block a little bit airflow, the idea is that there are obnoxious elements that come from the adjoining commercial property, so.
Yeah.
So it's a balancing.
All right, so is the, um, difficulty, the alleged difficulty self-created?
No.
No.
No, well, I mean, other than the fact that you bought the property next to a commercial property, but that's.
Yeah, but.
It is what it is, it's not self-created, I guess.
Yeah. And I would say because, and also, uh, to that, the use of the lot has recently changed from a grass yard to a parking lot, and there's now traffic driving through from Main Street to Furnace.
Oh, that was grass back there?
That was grass back there, and Downey paid for it, plenty like that.
Got it, got it.
So it's gotten worse.
That's a good point, I think.
Okay, any, any further discussion or, or comments?
From me.
Okay. So can we have a motion to, this is gonna be a resolution?
Well, do we do a balancing?
We did.
Uh, we can make a statement, sure.
Oh.
Or I can write, write that out, um.
Because we, we did each criteria, then we have to do a balancing statement as to the five criteria.
Okay, so, um, in, in balance, the ZBA.
We can mention the criteria that we will find in favor, just on the balance that and, and the fact that, uh, it's not an extensive variance being sought. It's really, uh, in line with what we grant for these circumstances. Also, as you said, the nature of the backyard of the commercial property has changed.
The man lives beside a commercial parking lot. And so he's, he's making, and there's precedent for allowing a larger, higher-than-four-foot fence. And the applicant is actually, um, you know, working with us, compromising in a sense, with only limiting this fence height to six feet above the lowest grade adjacent to the fence, which is on the neighbor property. So, on balance, it's a good, it's a good, uh, a good decision, a good way to go. The scales tip, I think, a lot with the, the fact that it's a commercial property next door, commercial parking lot right there. Nighttime headlights and all that kind of stuff, it's not a street, so.
Okay, so, um, so I'm gonna fine-tune this later and enhance it, but in, in balance, the ZBA finds that the requested variance is in line with precedent for the circumstances of a residential property bordering on a, the business district. Um, the changes are minimal, um, we're granting the minimum, uh, variance necessary, which still offers a great benefit to the property owner and a good compromise for, um, for people who may see, we're reducing the, the visible height of a fence through this compromise from people who are gonna look at it from Main Street. Anything else to add to that?
And, and, and the aesthetic of the topper, you know, that's been agreed to, uh, you know, the, you know, the characteristic itself, uh, we don't know exactly what it's gonna look like in the end, but.
And so this is marking to.
And then you can simply also make, mention that the Historic Board will look at it as well.
Okay. So this is gonna be. Resolution, what resolution is this? I don't understand why we can't have a real Wi-Fi here.
There is no Wi-Fi in this?
There's not, there's not village-provided Wi-Fi. That I know about anyway, maybe I don't, I don't know the secret.
I'm tired, I don't look at it anymore.
Um, I think, I'm just gonna guess at the number, but I'll fix it later if we need to. Let's gonna call it Resolution twenty eighteen dash five dash one. So would somebody like to make a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve as written and just, and vote, uh, decided by the board members as to the criteria of completion.
I'll second a motion. Okay, any further discussion on the motion? All right, all in favor of approving the six-foot fence variance as described in the resolution? Say aye.
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 Okay, unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So what happens now is I'm gonna write this up and get it to, um, the other board members for a final review, and then we'll get it to Jeff at the village office. Takes about a week or so before, um, you can get a building permit.
Okay. Do I, I need to go to the Historic Review Board now?
Yeah, that's right, you have to do that first.
Yeah.
So you have to, um, do that next step, and this doesn't grant you the right to start building, you have to wait for all of your permits.
Yeah, I've already submitted a package to them, I, I didn't know I was supposed to go to you first, so.
It's kind of a.
Material.
Yeah, it's kind of a new thing that we're trying to save people a little time.
Yeah. Okay, so.
So apologies that you.
Oh, no problem.
Made an extra trip.
Yeah, okay, well, thanks a lot.
Thanks very much.
Best of luck.
And thank you.
Do you have everything, uh?
Do I need anything else you, um, you need, or do you need anything that I?
What's that?
That's my deed. Yeah, I mean that.
The original deed you should keep or anything like that.
That's not the original.
We really got it all here.
But we do, as long as we have a copy of the survey, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The survey, do you need the pictures or anything, or is that?
Well, I mean, uh, we, we referenced to one of the fences. Well, I mean, we, we reference to one of the fences, but should we keep it?
You could keep that if you want.
It's up to you, what do you think?
I don't think we need it, but if you would, I'm open to keeping it if you would like to.
I think we should keep it, because we can reference back to it as the type of fences that we've approved and looked at.
Okay, great.
You know, for commercial, I mean, just as an example.
Yeah.
And we did allude to it in the, in the order.
So, you've got anything?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Richard.
Thank you.
Okay. You can come on up if you want, usually we do the workshop sitting at the table.
This is the official chair.
Yeah, one of those chairs is quite well laced.
Maybe taller.
All right, so, let me distribute some of this material. Do you have any new materials that, that I mentioned in the email?
So, well, I mean, pretty much, Aaron, I had questions for all of your questions, so I figured it'd be helpful. Get the answers, and that way, get you guys exactly what you need.
Did Donald get one of those?
Yes.
Um, I don't need that yet. Do you have the deed? And Jeff told me that you have paid the escrow and the application fee, so that's good.
Two thirty Main Street.
Corner Cedar, uh, corner Cedar Main.
This is the new house right across from Town Hall.
Oh, okay, okay.
You guys constructed it, right?
Yeah, yeah. Didn't move from Cornwall?
Yeah.
Over here, that was on the board.
Yeah.
I think I remember.
Yep.
Yeah, we were in this room a lot.
Yeah. Yeah.
CFO, look at that. I just wanna see what they're submitting, no, I'm, I'm good.
Let's see, hold on one second. Do you have, is the denial in here or anything?
Um, yeah.
Here, Mike.
Oh, I, I saw what I needed to see, John.
Okay.
Thank you. I do have that, I believe. CFO, where's the denial? Do we have the referral from Jeff?
Um, I know that I submitted it.
I wonder if I lost that for you.
I can always resend it to you and get home there.
Here's the survey.
Guys, I didn't hit you with another sheet of paper, but just so it might be easier for you guys to kind of reference what we're looking at. This one includes the triangle you were talking about, the thirty by thirties, by the way.
So, where the yellow is, is where you're intending on putting the fence?
Yes.
So, the front part of the fence is gonna be, uh, equal to the house. It's not gonna be right on the property line in the front.
Right, yeah. And it's gonna be, it's, now, did you have a twenty-five foot setback there for the house, or we granted it, right?
Yeah, they got that.
Yeah. So, you're looking to put the fence right to the property line, on the Cedar Street side, no?
On the Cedar Street side, and then, I guess there isn't really a street designation, because that's a driveway that actually runs behind the back of the house, so, on the property line of that driveway.
So, the other, the other three sides are the property line?
Right, yeah.
Where was it, sorry, I meant that I just gave you.
Um, yeah, who had that, Tony?
I had, I gave it to you, you can look at mine.
I must have misplaced the, the referral from Jeff, I'll, I'll talk to Jeff about it in the coffee, don't, don't worry about it.
I, I had it on my computer at home, I'll just forward it off to you when we get back, if you have it.
Okay, sure.
I'm very mugged.
Okay.
Did you have an idea of the type of fence you were considering?
I mean, just kind of based off of our experience at this point, having kind of gone through this somewhat with the house, we were gonna obviously go with like a wood fence, we honestly haven't really locked too much into a design. We were told when we met with Jeff, he was like, it makes more sense to come here and see if you guys can even get the height that you're looking for before you really go too much further into the decision process on that, so...
Yeah, would this be part of the historic board, you're not, you are?
Yeah, we have to do that too, yeah, but like Jeff, you know, he said to come here first, and then see if we get the variance for the height, and then before it goes, yes.
It looks like you'll have at least one gate, a gate at the end of the driveway.
Yeah, I mean, part of the, again, this is just more of from being in the house here, you know, we have Town Hall across the street in the Cedar side, and we've been having, really, the three big things we're trying to kind of cover off on the fence is, one, containment for the dog, she likes to run around and jump and all that stuff, so, that's why we're a primary focus for the fence height. The second thing for the gate, we're having a lot of issues with people parking in our driveway on court night.
Or just sitting there.
Even sitting on our back deck, I came home from work, and I had someone sitting on my steps, people walking up the back.
Well, those are criminals anyway, they don't...
I, I mean, I just don't wanna get into it with somebody, you know what I mean? So, there's, so, there's that challenge right there, you know, keeping people off, and, and look, you know, part of me gets it to it, for a while, it was something completely different, it was an empty lot for a while, so, that's probably the reason why we'll have the gate also, to keep people out of the driveway, it'll keep the dog in there, and also provide the privacy that we're, we're looking for on that side.
Do your neighbors have similar problems?
Uh, well, the neighbors behind me actually don't have a driveway, so, they don't have the parking issue, it's just it gets real tight over there, especially on court night, and then, when school's in session too, you know, you got the bus traffic, and you got lots of cars going in and out, picking kids up from school, so, it can get a little bit hairy, but court night specifically is when we see the most kind of problems with people in the driveway, or just blocking the driveway and stuff like that.
So, let's, um, let's focus on what we need to see on your application to get to a public hearing.
Okay.
So, we're gonna need to, to notify everybody who can see the fence essentially from their property.
Okay, and, and Aaron, maybe that was the one thing that I missed, because that was why, like, and the properties are weird, because we sit within the two twenty-four Main Street lot, you know, like their driveway kind of goes around outside of N L. And so, when I was going through the code, that was why I included them, because it, I guess it said to include your neighbors actually touching the property, and they're the ones that do.
Touch or see in the immediate vicinity, the very immediate.
So, you got, the guy to your left, he was renovating that house, you got the Marans behind you.
Right.
And then, they gotta notify the town.
The town.
You know, and then, I don't know, do you have to go across the street?
I, I think you do, it's a...
Oh, definitely.
It's gonna be quite...
You got Tom Costello across the street, and then you get the two houses.
This is, my thinking on this is it's gonna be somewhat controversial fence, so I think it's to your advantage to notify everybody.
Okay, because you don't want people coming at you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, you know, whatever you guys think as far as...
It's catch twenty-two, you see what he did, no one came for this guy, and that sometimes no one comes, sometimes people come and just sit, and don't say a word, but, you're covered, by giving everybody the notice, you can't say that, oh, by the way, I didn't know about it, you're, you're getting a return receipt requested, they're gonna get it, and if they don't show up, they don't show up. But it's covering you more than anything. So, you have to get, like I said, the guy to your left, Marans, the town, and then across the street. Probably the, what are there, four houses across the street? Sullivan's on the end house, Costello's going with the brown porch, and then I don't know who the other people are. Jeff can probably...
Is there actually something we give there?
So, what happens is, once we get this list and we schedule the public hearing, we will send you a copy of the hearing notice, and you send that to them with a return receipt.
Okay. Will their names be listed on the hearing notice, or, I mean, or is it just the fact that we're specifying to them the names?
Their names...
Well, you gotta send them a letter.
We, we have to okay, I mean, we, we can okay who's, who gets the notice, and I think that should be everybody who can see it.
So, considering the nature of the application, would it be good to have some ground view photographs, looking at the property, just to...
Yeah, I think...
That we can relate to that, you know, you know, from the different angles of your property, you know, maybe three, four, I mean, four angles at least, and you can then point out where you're gonna put the fence? I mean, we can see, this, this is helpful, the overhead is a big help, and sometimes, you know, down low, looking at the property.
And just listening to kind of what you guys went through for the previous element in here, I mean, we really don't have any type of wall issue, and there is a, a wall in the back of the house, but I'm fine with, you know, similar approach of essentially splitting the distance, you know, six feet in aggregate, however you wanna look at it, but most of the property is just, you know, that we're fencing in is, is land, so...
So, what else does it need?
So, we're gonna need a better site plan.
Is that like this? What do you mean?
The, where's the one that shows the fence?
Well, you got this one here, this shows yellow as a fence.
All right, so this is kind of what I'm assuming you're intending to be the site plan?
Right.
And it's got, it's missing a few things, one is the numbers aren't legible, and people are gonna wanna see the, see the numbers.
For the setbacks?
Um, for, for your property, for the distance from your, the, the property, from your house to the border of the property, and I guess the, we also need to see the side yard and front yard setbacks?
Okay.
That I described in the...
Yeah, I have all that.
Um, that's gonna need to be on the plan, so that people can see it. And... So, we want, we'll wanna see how far outside of the setbacks the fence is.
So, if you're facing a house, let's just assume we're looking at it from Main Street straight on, we're fifteen, fifteen eight, and then, on the Cedar Street side to the house, we're twenty-five, four inches and five eighths, on the left side of the house, we're twenty-five and an eighth, and then we're exactly ten feet off the back.
Okay.
Facing it.
So, by set, what we're looking for is dashed lines, one of your showing where the, the official setbacks are. I don't think I have anything as an example of that, but...
Something similar to this.
Um, yeah, this is, this is the setback here, isn't it?
Yeah.
So, we wanna see this on this, on your site plan.
Okay, okay. And the fence is right on the property line on those four corners apart from the front of the house, or?
Right.
It's slightly off.
Um, it'd be right on the property line, yeah, except for the front house.
You've got, I think if you could make the part of Main Street more to scale, that would probably be to your advantage, so that...
Oh, in terms of the yard coverage?
Yeah, so people don't think the fence is going right up on Main Street. And we'd also wanna see the distance from, from the front of your house to...
From the front property line to the, to the house, so...
Yeah, the, the village owns some of that yard, doesn't it?
Yeah, like, I think it's like just under eleven feet, I mean, we maintain it, but it's technically, I guess, theirs.
Yeah, so you'd have to measure, I would imagine, just from your property line.
I think it would be helpful just to put all of that on there.
Right, to be like village property line, and here's where the fence is, okay.
If the public come and they say, you know, we can't really picture where this fence is because the numbers aren't in here, then we might delay it.
And then put it relative to the sidewalk too, I mean, so they, they know where the sidewalk is.
Okay.
Donald, do you have any thoughts?
I think, you know, you might consider just doing it on a blow up of your number of property surveys for, for the plan, for the fence.
It's a good idea.
Because it shows, it shows all your, a lot of information.
Okay.
Yeah, because you got it all right there, it's really expanded.
And you got everything there. Has all the information, and then this is very effective, the Google map, it helps a lot. So, this could cover, you know, the legal issues, and then this gives us a good idea of the neighbors, and, you know, where you are and stuff like that. So, in other words, I would just keep this as a kind of informal, but it's very informative, and then you're, the one that Aaron's talking about, I would just put it on my property survey, I would take this portion and just get it blown up, that's easy to do.
Yeah.
Now you can use that, get all the site information on it.
And as you blow it up, make sure that we can read the numbers.
Right.
So, in amongst the photographs that you take, you know, take one or two from like remote areas, from like across the street on Main Street, looking back, so we can see how your, how your property sets up to the other neighboring properties.
I mean, we've all seen it, of course, but people will wanna...
Yeah, we know.
It's like the top of the hill, like the other side, you know, there are people.
But we wanna get an idea of relativity, especially when we're talking about a higher fence. Yeah, relatively, because as you heard, as we went through the criteria here, everything is relative to the neighborhood, and, you know, whether it's, you know, in line with the characteristics of the neighborhood, so that's why, that's significant. Do we have, is there any kind of a environmental segment or anything we gotta fill out here?
Um, we did get that, but I believe, but I didn't pass it out, because, didn't we? How can you put that in there? Maybe I'm thinking of the last...
I have a question as well, as far as like other fences that are in historic district that are above six feet, should I come with like pictures of that for like, to reference for the hearing?
Well, those are usually, well, if, as long as they're around residential properties.
Exactly.
Purely residential, between residential and residential.
Yeah, and a couple of our neighbors have got six foot fences.
You don't understand that a lot of the fences that are six feet high in the village were built before the zoning code was enacted in nineteen sixty-eight.
Yeah, there's two that...
So, they're grandfathered in legal.
Got it.
But it doesn't mean that just because, oh, that guy has a six foot high fence, it means that there's some kind of precedent for us.
For sure, well, we know ones that are...
And there are also a lot of people that put them up in the dead of night, and, you know, and, you know, that, that's a reality, but it doesn't make it right, so, you know.
Uh, I'm talking more from the angle of characteristics of the neighborhood.
Right.
Just like there are other existing, it's not like ours is gonna be the only one that's just going up, all of a sudden, there are pre-existing fences, whether they were done correctly or not.
Right, every, every, let me see, what, what comes before us is, is only what is brought before us by the building, building inspector, so we don't run around making judgments as to other properties, you know, it's one property at a time that comes before us, and we have to follow the code as closely as we can in order to maintain the character of the, and the intent of the village board that has drafted the code, so, that's, that's really what you're, you're up against and looking at.
Okay.
So, we're, we're here just to really fulfill the intent of the code as a board, that's, that's, that's what our purpose is.
So, to get back to the environmental form.
Yeah.
Do you remember if you submitted that? I don't, I don't have it in my...
Yeah, honestly, I'm not sure.
There's a short environmental assessment form which you'll find on the village website. There's a short environmental assessment form, which you'll find on the village website, and I can send you a link to that if you, if you want.
Great. Aaron, what's it for?
Well, it's a, I assume state mandated?
Yeah, state mandated, you just gotta go through it, you go through it, you'll see questions in there, and, uh, you know, just answer them to the best of your ability, and we're gonna review it anyway.
It doesn't really, I mean, doesn't usually apply to fences, but it's something that we have to have.
As a problem.
If you were gonna pave your entire lot, that would be an environmental concern, but you're not doing that.
Right.
Even though, you know, even that said, we still need you to have the form.
Okay.
You know, in case you're building a radioactive fence or something, I don't know. Um, so, I would like to suggest that we don't schedule the public hearing for the next meeting, and to give you time to put together the rest of this stuff.
Okay.
Um, if you're, if you really urgently need, need the fence, we could probably rush it, but, um, I think this is gonna be, um, you know, from my perspective, somewhat of a precedent to, to issue a, um, a variance for this fence. So I wanna make sure that everything is, is totally in place before we go to a public hearing.
And people have enough time to know about it and get ready to make.
And also people can look at it, and we don't wanna announce the public hearing when we don't have the application, you know, in the village hall, so that people can come and look at it.
It's whatever, two weeks, right?
We meet twice a month.
Okay.
Um, then, so let me look at the calendar and see when we can meet next. Our next meeting would be the first Thursday in June.
That's the next one, and you're suggesting that we wait till the following?
I'm suggesting we come back for another workshop to make sure that the application is totally locked down, and then we can schedule a public hearing.
Got it.
Okay.
So as soon as my calendar loads.
Got it, the next meeting, the next meeting for the next workshop would be the first Thursday in June, that's what you're saying?
Right, so first Thursday in June, and then the third Thursday in June would be the new, the closest, the soonest date for the public hearing.
Okay.
And then, um, if you get the variance, then you would have your building for another week or so after that.
Okay. I'm gonna make any further.
Oh, right, I'm sorry, I keep forgetting about this story. They're gonna get angry with me, but, after you deal with that. Okay, so, do you have any other questions for us? Are we missing anything that?
I mean, I guess just a quick punch list for us, so we'll get more photos, both, you know, multiple angles and from further, um, you know, further out views and outside of just the block itself. I'll get the survey blown up to include the setbacks, so it's all legible, and including the proposed, um, perimeter for the fence. Uh, a notification to the neighbors, you said we're gonna get something for that?
So the first step is for you to bring us a list of all your neighbors.
Okay.
And you wanna, um.
Can I get that from, from your phone?
Yeah, you can get the addresses, pay them to Jeff, or call him, or email him, or whatever you like.
Okay.
And he will give you the property owner's names, and that's what we wanna see.
Okay. Again, is there like something specific I hand to them, like?
We're gonna get that to you when we schedule the hearing.
Okay, cool, alright, just one minute.
Just get a return receipt requested.
Okay.
But you don't have to worry about that until we schedule the hearing.
Yeah.
The environmental form will fill out. I'm assuming you guys want the thirty by thirty triangle on that survey too?
Yeah, why not?
Okay.
Just so somebody might ask, and then you can show them.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, um, is there, I, just for my own, um, takeaways too, for this project, is there something unique about this project where you think there's gonna be potential pushback? If we have our paperwork all buttoned up, if we have sign off from the neighbors, you know, fingers crossed that all works out well?
Um, I, just my uneducated opinion at this point is, I have not seen a fence like this on a corner lot like that.
Okay.
And the, um, the way the village code works, is it considered, because you're on a corner, it considers both sides of that corner to be the front yard.
Okay.
And I think, um, so you've got, you've got the fence right up against your house on one front yard, but it's all the way at the property line on the other, so that's something that I have not seen.
Okay.
Yeah, and again, you know, we're, we're supposed to just follow the code and the intent.
Got it.
You know, we, you know, every, every application is different, uh, but the guideline is set, you know, in, you know, in place to say, hey, this is what the village intent is. I mean, the, the height of the fence issue has been revisited a number of times throughout the years, I mean, Donald, you remember, right?
Yeah, I was, I did it, I mean.
How many did we do?
We, we, you know.
That was ten years ago, right?
It's a very controversial issue, we've been, we've tried to make comp, we've tried to, there have been discussions with the village board to see ways to, to change the code, but ultimately, um, you know, um, the board has chosen not to go anywhere with it. I'm, I'm not saying that I think that's right or not right, I'm just saying it's a fact. And, um, a six-foot-high fence in, you know, the, the code is saying four-foot-high fence on your property line, that's what it's saying. And, um, this board has to worry about, will we grant you, somebody else might say, well, hell, you know, I got a dog too, you know, why can't I have a six-foot-high fence? And I have a neighbor from hell, that's the other thing we get all the time, you know, I mean, so, the previous applicant, you know, he had, um, a, um, buy a commercial property, and that's a well-known precedent in the village, and it also places stuff in the planning board. So I'm not talking about your application, I'm joking, but applications that have been in the past, that, um, there has to be, with one fell swoop, we could become a legislative body by granting something that basically, pretty much anybody could get.
No, a hundred percent.
So that's, um, and we're not, we're not, we're not the village board.
And just know that.
So when people complain about, you know, the sixth, the, the fence issue, it, it's, it's a, it's a legislative issue, it's the village board. It's the, it's the law of the village that was laid down twenty, thirty, you know, nineteen sixty-eight. So, you know, that's how they felt, and, you know, and I, I guess if you polled the village, you'd have, a lot of people would say it's a great law, we love it, and a lot of people would say we don't like it, and, you know.
And, and just to let you know, uh, throughout New York State, and probably many other jurisdictions outside of the state in New York, but the vast majority of, uh, you know, municipalities and villages and townships and everything have four-foot fence rules. So, it's, it's not like, you know, cold spring selects an uncommon height, it is, uh, characteristic of virtually all the codes around. If you, you can just check any other code, whether it be Mamaroneck or Beacon, or, you know, anywhere, you'll, you'll, you'll tend to find that, and I would guess at minimum, eighty to ninety percent of the, the other codes in the municipalities look at four-foot fences.
So, right now, our job is to help you put your application together, so you can make the request that you want, and then at the hearing, our, our job is to, to try to get applicants to, uh, to let applicants do what is much plausible, what they want with their properties, within the balance of the code and the neighborhood. So that's, um, that's how we make decisions with public input.
Yeah, and everything is looked at individually, so we weigh everything.
Um, so that's a long answer to your question, sorry.
No, 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 I appreciate it, um, this, you know, I haven't put up a fence before, so.
Yeah, this is all new for us.
I put up pages.
So, you know, only a, a.
So, um, if there aren't any other questions from either of applicants of our, you can close the meeting, and feel free to email me if anything comes up.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
When's the next, what's our next date then?
Um, so, our next date would be June. First June, I probably had that. It's the first, the first Thursday in.
First Thursday, June seventh, first, it's a workshop. Make sure they get all.
For the workshop and then.
Yeah.
Yep.
So we will, we will plan on meeting on June seventh.
Great.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Nice to meet you.
Have a good night.
Or see, or see Justin.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Can you see again?
Thank you. I know I seen you on the train.
Oh, yeah. That's, that's a killer.
I know it is.
I was six plus hours last night.
Not last night.
Two nights ago. Oh, yeah, I was on the last train out of the city, we got, held up a Beacon, the, the.
Peak Skull.
Peak Skull, sorry, held up Peak Skull, all the trees were just literally being blown down in front of the train when I was on, it felt like the train was actually gonna tip over. Um, luckily I had a, a friend that lives in Corvina, and was able to buy that person dinner to.
My neighbor, she rented a car.
I waited until ten o'clock to get home.
Yeah.
I heard the larger pact.
It was brutal. Yeah, Peak Skull Brewery was rocking, actually, everyone got off the train and just followed right in there, so.
I could do that.
Guys, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Yeah, my neighbor rented a car.
Alright, um, motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, all favor of adjourn now, aye.
Aye. Adjourn. Thank you, Mike.